Call to get, call to order our Finance Committee Workshop this evening, August 16th, at seven o'clock, now 7:08. Call the meeting to order. Acknowledge an executive session. Mr. Schultz, could you comment on that, please?
Tonight, council had an executive session from 6:30 approximately to 7:05 regarding legal matters involving the proposed water main extension under Section 708, A4 and 5 of the Central Act.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. We have Audrey Coppersmith here in the room. Now, this is two sessions in a row. We're going to let you comment in, all right? I'm going to keep with Bill's limit to one question, and then we'll go to the digital questions.
I'll let you ask the questions.
I'm only kidding.
It's Audrey Coppersmith, 412 Osage Drive, CT4. Anyhow, wanted to give the Borough Council a quick update on CT4. Unfortunately, with the second sinkhole, we have engineers that have pulled out yet again. And unfortunately, this time, from their drilling, they completely damaged someone's home. So the fact that she has structural cracks, not just on the foundation, but she actually has them in her bedroom, her bathroom, and various other locations within her house. She was moved out for one night for safety sake. She has been put back in her home with no ETA as to when the fixes will be made. She did have someone in there. She just texted me earlier also addressing the shower and some other things in her bathroom that showed up even after the structural engineers who have been there now twice. She has sensors on her home. Two other homes in the development still have sensors on their home. In the meantime, we've been told that it's back to the drawing board for what's going to happen with basin number eight, including an update from the property company, actually just yesterday evening, or yesterday morning. It said they wanted to reach out with some updates. At this time, we are pleased to announce that the sinkhole remediation has now been completed, but unfortunately, it really isn't. They have drilled and filled 24 holes using well over 100 cubic yards of grout to complete this project. It says, lastly, basin eight, the basin experiencing the sinkholes is back with the civil engineer for redesign. This will most likely take a few weeks for approval. Once the revised design has been approved, the Myers team will be able to resume the work. This basin work will also dictate when the basin along the trail will be finished. At this time, there's no final decision on the large pond that is currently filled with water. Now, our biggest concern is the fact that the building continues. The pond is not being addressed. It's back with the engineers, which we understand that has to happen. But then why, in fact, is he allowed to continue to build? And I'll just go through quickly just some of the, this was even just last week with our home where they were removing the plastic and the ladder crashed down, and it just stayed on the property for a bit. In fact, here he's building the new duplex. And in fact, I had to contact code enforcement twice because they were down there hammering cinder blocks before 6:00 in the morning, two days in, two out of three days in a row. So needless to say, that part of it has stopped because the plumbing and things are going in now. But we want to make sure that he doesn't just go ahead and build what he wants to build and then pull out, because they are working on some of the sidewalks. And there's been some conversation that paving is going to happen. But we're like, well, how can paving happen if the building is continuing and work needs to be done on these retention ponds? Because once you block off the access, that's going to cause a problem to the roads. If they do them, then we're going to be left with that expense, because he will have done the initial paving and the sidewalks. And then the community as a whole will have to absorb the damage that's done. So we just, you know, appreciate any and all help that we can get, as well as, you know, I've talked to Roseanna Baer again from DCNR as of last Thursday, and she said to keep her updated on what's going on with the sinkholes and so forth. We are concerned, you know, because what's going to happen farther on down the way when they've now combined what was five ponds, they've now combined into basically one continuous river. This was just after last Monday storm. This is what the middle one looked like. So clearly, it's very close to people's homes, the water level. It is taking more than 24, 36 hours to, it's probably taking more like three to four days, if not longer, to kind of dissolve down. And that's even with the drought. So needless to say, and this is the pond right behind my house. This is how much, how full it got. Fortunately, we're up on top of the hill, but I can't imagine what it would be like for those people right at the bottom. So like I said, we're still concerned. We're concerned that the building continues and that he potentially can pull out, and then we're left with a mess. And that's why we don't want to see what's happened here in CT4, continue with a potential project out for CT5. If there's any questions, concerns, or whatever, I'll be happy to address those.
I do have a question. At Basewood, at 2:30, he's putting in a new structure, a new home. I don't know who can answer this. Maybe Eric can answer later on down the line for me. I'm not sure. But there is no, I took a tour of all of that, and there is no access for equipment to go in if there's basic problems. Once that home's built, there's actually
It's a duplex. It's two homes.
No, no, no structure, no vehicle or anything that can get in there to take care of that retention pond. As a councilman, I'm very much concerned, how do you get to those retention ponds if you should need a vehicle that's larger than a hose 10 times its size? I mean,
Or a Bobcat or anything like that. I mean, any heavy equipment, because at the bottom, you have a small retention pond. You're enclosing it here with a duplex.
Right.
At the top, we have the big retention wall, and we have some trees on one side, and we have someone's porch with the post right on the other side.
But how do you, how do you get in there if, if you would need to do something in those retention ponds?
Good question. That's what we'd like to know, too, because otherwise, it's going to cost us tens of thousands of dollars to bring in cranes or whatever to get equipment in there. And that's not fair to our community.
And the cranes would have to be parked or pulled apart outside of that retention pond. It would not have an access to the
No, it would not.
Retainment pond.
Correct. It would not.
And then when you have heavy flooding or anything would happen, God forbid, that you would have underground springs. In other words, you're putting thing, the thing I can't get through my mind is, you're putting cement into a sinkhole, and you're trying to close something off. I don't, you're trying to close something off. But where will that send the water? And to what other areas? And what type of problems will begin to exist after those, after that water, you know, is closed off and entering into the, I don't know. I'm not an architect.
I'm with you, but I don't know that any of us here are qualified to have this discussion.
I'm not. That's why I'm asking the question. Is there someone, I know there's got to be people smarter than us who can give us these answers to help part of our town. Because this is, you know, and so Scott, I'm only asking because I, we all care enough to want to be able to help.
Oh, absolutely.
But I'm bothered by the things that, is he building more homes than he said he was going to over there?
As far as we know, it's just the 121. I know the original plan was for 100, but that was before, you know, that was several years back.
It was 121.
He's not building more than he was permitted to do.
So it increased.
He's not building more than he was permitted to do on that, on that property.
From what, from where was this base from? What year? This, when he started the process?
The final approved plan.
Approved plans?
It's the
And that was at the beginning of the?
It's the last approved plan, whatever it was.
No one knows.
Well, I don't, sitting here, no, no.
No, no, no. I just wonder if it's 10 years ago, five years ago, you know, when that was approved. I don't know. I'm really trying to figure out, because it starts off with so many homes, and then after a period of time, and it's okay, then we build them.
It's been 121 as long as I can remember.
And how long is that? Give me, give me tons here, Scott.
It's longer than I've been on council.
Okay.
Because I was interested in this when we were still on the school board because of the potential tax revenue that came.
Is that when it began?
Potential tax.
That retirement area?
Yes.
Thank you, because I didn't pay any attention to that while I was on the school board, Scott. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, with the, if any other public comment in the room?
Is it possible to explain?
Yes, long as it's not obscene.
Robert Holt, Third Ward. I'm going to bring a number up in the room, because I haven't heard it in this room for over a year or so. $28 million. And that's the total cost of all the construction, infrastructure buildings that you're working on between the sewer plant and the municipal building. And the only conversations and numbers I've heard were 11 million and $5 million grant here, $5 million grant here. I know some of that is going to come from, the funding for that is, you know, the sewer plant is going to come from probably some bonds and things like that, spread it out. But I just thought, you know, $28 million is a number that we really ought to be discussing at various points. And the last thing is, there was a United States senator, there was a congressman, two state legislators in the borough for a meeting about the construction project. And from all the accounts, I haven't heard any council member who was at that meeting. There was the mayor. But, you know, and I feel like I didn't have a voice at that meeting because there were no council members, the people we elect from our wards, from our, from our neighborhoods. And just think in the future, when you have that kind of delegation in the community, that some more elected officials from the wards ought to be at that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any digital participants?
The ones we want.
The ones. Any G or PG rated participants?
If you're joining us via Zoom, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
Okay. Is Joanne Kleiman, or you?
No.
Okay. So does that mean we have none?
Before we begin, can I ask one other question?
Okay.
Robert had asked it, and I do want to sort of tackle it, is about the $5 million. Nan Dunstert had brought that up when she was manager. What did we want to do with that $5 million from COVID? And some people had ideas on how they wanted to spend it. But at the very end, we decided to put it back into an account to be used for the people of Hannover during a dire time of emergency. Who gave permission after Kate Clunk gave us a $5 million grant, which had to be matched by the borough of Hannover? Who granted and that balance to be used? I just ask a question.
I, I don't know that.
Okay. Can you get me the answer?
Yeah, that would be a good thing to submit to the manager or whatever, and we'll find out. I don't
Thank you, Margie.
Not sure exactly how it worked.
I just, I just need to know.
I'm not throwing her under the bus. I'm just, you know.
I mean, I'll research it, but it was pre-me, so I'm not sure how that money was spent. I know that it was
No, we used that money to, as a counter, right, for the grant.
It was used, but money was set aside from that.
Right.
That wasn't needed to be used, because that was used for wages and things.
Well, it didn't go through council, that I recall.
The money was, the money was moved to police.
Anybody on here make that decision?
We had a certain time limit to use, and then it's being brought back for capital improvements.
But we had time. We had plenty of time. The thing, no, I just want to know how we sit here as council to represent our people and our wards. And all of a sudden, we're brought to the realization that monetary things have happened, and we were in no way connected with it.
We were.
That's not, that's not true.
It was brought before us and put into an account to be used for something dire for the people of Hannover.
The ARPA funds were meant for police or infrastructure projects.
No, no, no. What funds?
The ARPA funds. That's what I'm talking about.
The COVID funds. The funds from COVID.
Correct. That's seven and a half million.
Then why were we asked what we wanted to do with it? What were our priorities? Why was that question asked to us if it was already decided upon in the giving of that money, that it can only be used for certain purposes? Oh, yes, we sat, I sat down at the bottom with that.
We had all these conversations.
Now, 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 not the forum to have this discussion.
You said, I can ask questions at a council meeting.
Let Amy answer what she's knowledgeable about regarding this, and then we'll dig into it deeper.
And move on. Okay.
So I think that what you're thinking is there's, there's two separate things.
Okay.
The ARPA funds and the RACP. So the RACP is the five and a half million dollar grant that we got for the police and emergency building. That is designated as just for that purpose.
That was, that was what, okay, yeah, I understand that.
And that is, that requires us to match equally.
Exactly.
The ARPA funds, there's certain rules around what it can be used for. One of those things is that, is police and fire wages. So because we budgeted in our general fund to pay wages for police and fire, those ARPA funds reimbursed our general fund for those wages, which freed up general fund money to be used for whatever council determined they wanted to use it for. At a certain point, council, and I don't have the date in front, you know, offhand, council decided that those ARPA funds would be used as the match to that five and a half million that we got from
Get me that information, please.
We will. Yeah, we'll get that.
So there's, there was two different funding sources. One was the, there was two different funding sources. One is the ARPA money, and the other is the RACP.
Right. Kate Clunk had come, and she was very happy that she had gotten us $5 million to put toward building new structure.
And we have to match that.
I asked also, and I, it was never answered to me, and then someone said, oh, no, you can't do that. I said, why can't we use it for remodeling those buildings? And somebody said, no. Well, you mean to tell me that when we accept something, I hate when it comes with strings attached. And we had, we took the $5 million, okay, and we matched it, okay, with the, with the grant that
Right. And just, just to be clear, that, that money has not been spent. That money is not, right.
No, no, it's not spent.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
No, no.
It has not been, it has not been spent. This is all, okay.
I'm with you, Amy. It's just that we had to match it, and we used that to match it.
Yes.
That's all I needed to know. And that's what I want to understand as to who gave that permission to do that without consulting council. Maybe
No, council was consulted. Council was consulted. We'll get you the information.
Yep. To give that matching fund over.
We used the ARPA fund for matching funds and for the projects, for the capital project.
Okay, then could you get me that printout, please? I need a printout on
Yeah, we're going to get it. We'll get it for you.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. That's it.
The, I believe the lady online that was trying to unmute herself is now unmuted. Name and address, please.
Excuse me, I had a terrible time getting into the meeting, so I don't even, I missed the first 15 minutes. My name is Joanne Kleiman. I live at 410 Osage Drive, 410 Osage Drive in Cherry Tree. I don't, I don't know if anything was spoken about Cherry Tree. Like I said, in the first 15 minutes of the meeting, all I had was a black screen. Can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, you know, and I just, you know, again, I heard, this has nothing to do with what was recently spoken. I don't know if anybody has spoken about Cherry Tree earlier when the meeting started. I'm not sure. But I know you've all heard many things about our community. And I just wanted to say to you all that, you know, we know there's issues that are going on here, but they're being taken care of, and that the opinions of one does not reflect the opinions of everyone else in this community, especially not me. We have a lovely community. Things are being fixed. And I just want you guys to know that we are being taken care of, and we do care about our community. And that is really all that I have to say. But again, opinions expressed by one are not the opinions expressed by all.
Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you for listening.
And we apologize for your difficulty in, in connecting.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Joanne Kleiman. Okay, so that brings us, with public comment closed, then, brings us to the consent agenda.
I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item four, Finance Personnel Administration, 24 calendar, the budget calendar. I have a motion to approve that, please.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, Public Safety Committee. We have 304 Broadway approving an ordinance, or advertisement, excuse me, an ordinance for the elimination of the loading and unloading zone.
So motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank, or any opposed? No, thank you. And item B, the residential rental survey. Authorize staff to finalize the online survey as prepared by the Lepsin Research Group to begin. Datal?
Datal.
Detail.
Datal. Is that a word?
Datal.
Datal. Collection efforts. Is that a word?
Just datal.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Darlene.
Thank you.
You motioned it, right, Darlene?
Yes.
Okay. Tim's the second. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item six, A, Take Home Vehicle Policy. Have a motion to approve that?
I second.
Tim, second with Darlene. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item seven, Water Resources. Item A. Eric?
So
Every time I see you, you have a bigger iPad.
That's his computer this time.
Every time I see you, my eyes get a little worse. Maybe there's a direct relation to those two things. What is in front of you is related to the closeout of Shepherd Myers project. As you are quite aware now, we've reached the endpoint of that project. And so what we're doing is trying to clean up all the paperwork so that we can, can move on. And in front of you, items 7A and 7B are two change orders. And the first of those change orders is one we've talked about a little bit before. And it's basically, what it is, is it is a contractor asking for consideration of additional payment. And what he is asking for are very specific items that were subject to certain circumstances outside of their control. Some of those were related to escalated fuel costs. At the time the project was occurring, we had a rather absorbent cost increase in fuel that was unforeseen. Certainly, the contractor had, had put in a provision to kind of figure out where gas prices would be in a year or two, and they did their best at that. But instead of gas going like this, gas went up very quickly for quite some time. And so that generated a lot of extra costs for them. And so items like that, there were certainly the material shortages that were occurring globally, where we struggled to get certain things in, and the things that we could get in came with more costs. And so all told, the contractor put in basically a request saying, look, I know that your contract doesn't have a provision for this. It doesn't have anything that I can appeal to you under. So I'm submitting this and asking for consideration. And so we've analyzed it. We've looked at it. I provided a memo in your packet that kind of talks to the different things. And I've put together what I believe to be appropriate based on knowledge of the project, based on what the contractor has said. And I don't believe that it fully is the amount he's asking for. I think the contractor had an estimated ask of, I think their ask was $135,277. And of that, my recommendation is only $89,000 of that be paid. And it's for various reasons. There are some things that I think the contractor does have some accountability in, and there are certainly some things there that I think we, as a borough, have some accountability into. If you recall, when this project started, we had to delay him because we did not yet have in hand the Army Corps of Engineers permits that we needed for him to start the project. And so we had bid the project, hoping that we would get the permits prior to, but that didn't happen. The permits happened some time after we had already taken the contractor on with the job. And so right out of the gate, the first thing the contractor agreed to do was, he cut $1 million worth of value out of the contract, because it was over the contract amount that we had all been kind of anticipating. We said, look, that's too pricey. We can't afford that. And so we backed down a number of items out of the contract package to reduce the overall contract by about $1 million. So my point to all that is simply that you have a contractor who was very flexible, very willing to work with the borough, ended up finishing the job, even if you were to grant these, with a negative 2.5% value to change order ratio, which is really not common. Five to seven, sometimes as high as 10%, is typically where you're at with those for a job of this size and this complexity. And to be on the negative side of that, that's good. That's, that's where you should be on a project. And that's really a testament to
Job was $10 million?
10, 4 was your final number.
10, 4. And we're saying
89,000.
We're looking for 90. So it's 9/10 of 1%.
Correct. So I've provided my take on it, but my take doesn't count. Your, your take counts. And so I am looking for direction from you, whether you will agree with my opinions on those, or whether you see some other value fit for that.
We definitely had some kind, something to do with holding them up.
On some of the items, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
That's what I needed there.
If we are going to accept motions, the only thing I don't agree with is the sand for $19,000. I disagree on that totally. Okay? But everything else, I agree.
And so you're, you're suggesting then
Well, just to be clear, the 19 was requested. I'm not recommending you do 19. I was only recommending 9,000.
I'm not, well, I'm not recommending.
Anything.
No, anything on that sand. That I thought could be handled by them. And before, you know, it took root that, it's, okay, I've said it before. I'm not going to go into it again. But other than that, everything else I agree with you on.
So, council, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but basically then it would start with a motion that they would agree to the change order minus the sand item would come to the table, and you guys decide if you agree with that. If you do, then that moves forward. If you don't agree with that, then there would be a separate motion.
So Mrs. Funk is making a motion to, for change order number six, instead of it to be 90,000, it would be 81,000. Is that what we're saying?
Roughly.
I'm not playing in pennies. Is that the motion that you're making?
Oh, you don't need a motion? Okay.
Well, I'm just, I'm not trying to
I'll motion. No, no, no. I'm sorry. I was just looking at something else. Okay, no motion.
Mr. Hagberg, you had a comment?
No, I'm, I'm for approving the change order as is.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Small component.
As is, is the motion that's on the table with a second? Okay. Those in favor of the motion for the 90,000, there's 89, 734, whatever, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Me. I, I oppose.
Okay.
I do, too, with the sand.
I do.
I felt the same way. Yeah.
Also opposed.
You oppose?
Yep.
So we have three against, and how many for? What's that give us?
There's no bar.
Six.
Just, just for the record.
Because we have, oh, that's here now.
Just for the record, what's the number that they were asking us for?
Uh, 135,000.
Six in favor.
Roughly, and some change.
It's okay.
All right, so we have six in favor, three against. Is that where we stand? Okay, so then the motion carries. Item two.
The second item is basically, as I mentioned, what we're trying to do now is we're trying to clean the project up. And one of the very normal and customary things you do at the end of a project is, you bring all of your unit values into alignment. And what I mean by that is, you have a bid package that went out that had 80-some bid items in it. And when that bid package was put together, they try to estimate everything. It's like building a house. And you certainly estimate your number of studs, and you estimate how much drywall, and you estimate all those things. And at the end of the project, invariably, those numbers don't always line up perfectly. And so where you might have thought you needed eight cubic yards, maybe you needed 10. Or where you thought you needed seven, maybe you only needed three. And so what this change order is doing is, it's just bringing all those units into alignment for auditing purposes. those units into alignment for auditing purposes. So that the end of the job, we have a true and accurate record of what did Shepherd Myers Dam actually need for concrete? What did it need for rock? What did it need for rebar and other things? The items that cause sort of the variance, you know, it's interesting because I went back through and I spent a lot of time really looking at it. They are things like where the engineer had estimated that when they blasted the face of the rock, how much of that rock was going to be left? Put a stick of dynamite against a piece of rock and you can guesstimate, but there's no science that tells us it's going to fracture exactly this way and exactly this geometric shape. And so that's just a good example of where you do your best. You try to take an estimate and say, okay, we're going to shave this much. But when you blast that rock, you might lose a bigger chunk and you might need more concrete then to fill in that chunk. So this change order is not saying to you, I need this much more money. What this contract is, this change order is doing is saying, allow me to have council recognize that I didn't need eight, I needed 10. I didn't need seven, I needed three. You know, that, that's sort of a mentality. That's.
So the $636,000 number that's shown here, what, what are the financial implications of that?
That's part of your 10.4 million that is, is the Shepherd Myers Dam project cost.
So that's in the money that's already spent?
Correct.
So you're reallocating the money, but not spending anymore?
Yeah. I'm just cleaning up the units.
Correct. And Jim, our controller, you're on board with this?
Yeah, if what Eric is saying is just, it's just a reaccounting of what's already occurred and we've already paid that.
So we said of using green paint, we use blue paint. We're just updating the bill of materials, if you will.
Question I have, Eric, is on the steel. I mean, rock, I understand. But was the steel, the additional steel needed as part of the reinforcement for the extra concrete?
So, no, no, the extra concrete largely was used in the rock face to prepare the rock face for where we would then pour against it. The steel was, you know, they go in and they go by tonnage. So they go by the, the tons of steel that are put in there. And again, it's, it is a science and it isn't. It's hard to go in and say, I mean, if you saw how intricate those mats of rebar are inside of that structure, trying to guesstimate the exact length of all the bars that you need and all the ties and, and how much all of that weighs is, is an estimate. It's a best estimate.
This is the zigzag?
All of it. The training walls, the zigzag part, the floor in the bottom, all of that. And so, you know, your engineer did their best to say, okay, well, looking at the drawings, you know, I'm sure they scaled off how many lengths of certain steel they had. They know a certain size. We know the weight of steel. But when that steel shows up on the site and you weigh it, that's when you get the true and accurate number of what it is. And that was just another good example of where there was a lot of variance.
So the point is, is that this is in the budget. It's already been paid. It's not, it's not another 600, 800,000 on top of the 10 point.
Okay. And Jim, you're good with that?
I mean, it's there. It's, we didn't save it. We didn't lose it.
Yep. You, you had some to the benefit and you had some to the not benefit.
For what he's explaining, just a, just a reaccounting of what's already occurred, then that's fine.
Okay. So this is.
It's within what we've approved.
All right. So then we need a motion then to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. High Point Residential Development, it phases two and three, approve the contractor request for the security release. Get back up here.
So this is an instance simply where when a developer builds infrastructure for you, you require them to bond it because you want to make sure they put it in. And if they don't put it in, you want to have some financial mechanism that you can go after them and say, okay, I'll put it in then and I'm going to take your money to do that. And so this is a case where the system is in the ground, the contractor did what they're supposed to do, the system is live and functioning and meets all of the regulations. And now they're saying, you don't need that financial assurance for me anymore. And so they're asking for that back. And so it's very normal and customary. But the process is that request has to be made to council. Council has to say, okay, we're fine with that. And so we have vetted it as the water department. We've looked at it. We've made sure everything's okay. There's nothing funky. We don't have leaks. And so I think it is appropriate, but it needs your blessing in order to release them.
So your recommendation to council is, all these have been met, the insurance bond, if you will, can be released. Okay? We have a motion?
I so motion.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, reports of the council, members, council committees and other public bodies. Do we have any reports from the individual committees in addition to what was included?
We did have a public works meeting. Basically, we continued talking on the new public works facility and the borough office and safety facility. We also talked a lot about water in the very beginning, which was a good conversation. But we continue to move forward with both of those projects.
Thank you, Mr. Kress. Any other? Mr. Hagberg, Mr. Regard?
We didn't have, we didn't have a committee meeting.
No report here.
Okay. Manager Lewis, any management reports you'd care to comment on outside of what was in the package?
No, sir.
All right. Any correspondence and information or no?
Just what was included in your package.
Other than, okay. That brings us to additional public comment, if there's any. I take that as a no. I believe then we would take a motion for adjournment.
So a motion. Second.
Second. All right.
We're adjourned at 45.